I'd like to call this meeting to order. If we could have the salute to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Columbo?
Here.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Here.
Mr. McAllister?
Here.
Mrs. Peck?
Here.
Mrs. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Pontillo?
Mrs. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Sembler? And Dr. Romano? We have a call.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Westwood Regional Board of Education has caused a notice of this meeting to be sent to the following announcing time and place thereof: Westwood Borough Hall, Westwood Public Library, Township of Washington Administration Building, Township of Washington Free Public Library, The Record, Community Life, and Pascagay Press. Can I have a motion on the minutes for approval? So moved by Mrs. Columbo, the second? Second? Any discussion? Sing on, roll call.
Mrs. Columbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Good evening. We were officially invited to the Rumble on the Raritan Football Showcase at SHI Stadium on Labor Day weekend. We were one of eight games selected across the entire state, and we are extremely excited for this opportunity. We will be playing Shore Regional High School out of West Long Branch. The exact day and time are still to be determined, between September 2nd and 4th, but we are 100% in the event. Our football team, band, and cheer will be proudly on display. There is an echo, Mr. Rosado. Is that...I'm just afraid I'm...I hear it when I'm speaking, it's distracting me. Can you hear it?
Yeah, I heard it when I was speaking.
It's just us? Okay. It's throwing me off. Thank you. Congratulations to the cast, crew, orchestra, and spring musical staff for the production of The Little Mermaid last week. The show was outstanding, and the scenery was beautiful. It really captured my heart, and I heard rave reviews. I'm proud to say the district's Instagram account is officially active again after about a two-year hiatus. I have 999 followers on it, so if I can get to 1,000 tonight, I would really be happy. So please follow us, because I try to post something on it every day. Tonight, we are appointing Andrew Kramer as the new Director of Technology. He is replacing Mike Wrightmeyer, who served the district very well the past seven years. We wish Mr. Wrightmeyer well in his retirement. Mr. Kramer has a bachelor's degree from the University of Pennsylvania and a master of Public Administration and Management and Finance from New York University. He is currently the Director of Information Technology and a principal in the Morris Plain School District. We look forward to welcoming him on May 31st. Tonight, the board is expected to approve the preliminary budget for the 22-23 school year. I have a related letter for parents and staff members that should come out tomorrow, so please be on the lookout for it. We have proudly prepared a budget that ensures our learners have access to contemporary facilities and programming. First, this budget supports a complete overhaul of the athletic facilities at the high school. There would be a new weight room, five refurbished tennis courts, turf replacement, track replacement, and new dugouts. That, added to the renovation of the high school's media center this summer, will make the high school a state-of-the-art facility that rivals any other district in the county. We will also use funds to obtain permits and drawings for baseball, softball, and track fields at the middle school. Second, in terms of academics, the budget supports the following: an additional full-time reading specialist to support our struggling readers, an elementary social and emotional learning program in order to create an environment in which students can do their best learning, funding for participation in the Pascagay Valley Regional Curriculum Office so that our curriculum is aligned with the Pascagay Valley districts on a grades six to 12 basis. New positions: three elementary resource room teachers, two middle school special ed teachers, and one shared dance teacher for the middle school and the high school, and strategic planning with Dr. Tracy Severance, who is a well-regarded consultant. Third, we are also well on our way to being able to provide air conditioning in the schools. Necessary electrical upgrades will be made next year, and the univents on the second floor of Brookside School will be replaced in preparation. In closing, the district is extremely fortunate to have the funding to support the vision of the administration and board. Credit for that is due to the fiscal acumen of Business Administrator Keith Rosado and present and past Board of Education members. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Board President's report. I'll do a little of mine, and then I'll read something that Dr. Romano has given me. On my behalf, I had the extreme pleasure of going to The Little Mermaid this weekend. What a phenomenal show put on by our students. Kudos to the staff as students and all the volunteers who made that happen. It was a wonderful performance, and it was so nice to see so many community members coming in to see it as well, and seeing little children dressed up in costumes and enjoying it. So it was very nice to see. From Dr. Romano, he sent this in. "Good evening, Board and community. I'm sorry I can't be with you this evening. I understand that there may be some additional challenges coming our way, so I'd like to share some thoughts that will hopefully take us back to the mantra, 'Take care of yourself, take care of each other, take care of this place.' Based on what we need to do tonight, I ask you to consider your comments and contributions in light of the following two points. Speak with the desire not to win, but to be understood. Listen with true curiosity and a hope to understand others. Communicating and working in this way will allow us to come together as a thoughtful community, whose true priorities are to take care of ourselves, take care of each other, and take care of this place. Continuing in the words of author Margaret Wheatley, 'There is no power for change greater than a community discovering what it cares about.'" In addition to the 20 to 30 folks who attend our meetings, those who post on social media, and those few who provide feedback via email, I often have the pleasure of speaking with some of the other 4,000 parents in our community. What I've learned from these conversations is that we value tolerance, respect, and human decency. We have more in common than we often realize, and we appreciate strong leaders who are committed to observing and listening with open hearts and minds. We appreciate leaders who strive to learn about our community so that they can create healthy and productive environments that work for all of us. Tonight, let's strive to move forward with an understanding of the needs of the entire community, and let's allow our superintendent to continue leading with that all-encompassing understanding. Thank you." Mrs. Administrator's report?
Good evening. Tonight, just a few things. On tonight's agenda, we have the two resolutions for the approval of the annual audit for the 2020-2021 school year. Along with the approval of the acceptance of the audit, you're also...will be approving the corrective action plan. All of...has been sent to the auditor for review, and that's based on the presentation from last meeting on March 3rd. Tonight also will be the approval...or there's a recommendation to approve two bids that we went out for. One being the George roof replacement, and the second being the creation of the additional staff bathroom at Berkeley School. Currently, there is only one bathroom at Berkeley School for staff, believe it or not, only one. Both of those bids came over budget, a little over budget, but the recommendation is to withdraw from the capital reserve account. That's where we are funding the current projects. The George...the roof project was over $70,000, and the bathroom project was over $7,800. So I'm posing the recommendation to go for...move forward with those projects, and we can discuss it during the finance committee if there's any questions. Also tonight, on the finance portion of the agenda, is the preliminary budget adoption. And I just request that prior to...I'll do a discussion at that point so we can have a full board discussion at that point. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Student representatives?
First off, in pre-k, the month of March is very exciting in preschool. We are beginning our hospital theme centers. The students will interact with their peers in roles such as doctors, nurses, and patients. This new theme allows the students to interact in an emergency room, a nursery, a gift shop, and more. In science, we will be discussing spring and the various weather patterns that March brings. A fun book that explains the weather is March Comes in Like a Lion and Goes Out Like a Lamb. St. Patrick's Day was a fun-filled day. The students participated by dressing festive green. We read some wonderful books, completed special projects, and sang some cheerful songs.
In high school academics, do new students stat for the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment last Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday in English Language Arts and Mathematics. On March 3rd, Mr. Wellfeld's French students enjoyed a lunch at a local French restaurant where they tasted traditional French dishes such as croquembouille and crème boule. On March 7th, many students attended the field trip to Lincoln Tech to learn about the trade and vocational programs they have to offer. For International Women's Day on March 8th, Mr. Brandon's Film Studies class analyzed several films and learned about the roles women have had in the film industry. The senior class has held several fundraisers in last month, most notably their annual senior bowling night at Humdingers on February 27th. Students enjoyed bowling, batting cages, laser tag, and an arcade while raising money for their prom.
In athletics, the winter season, highlighted by several significant team and individual accomplishments, came to a close at the beginning of the month. The competition cheer team are Big North Patriot Division champs for the second year in a row. The girls' basketball team had yet another successful season at 17 and 10, but unfortunately fell to top seed Jefferson in the sectional semifinals. Senior player Caroline Stokes represented Westwood at the State and National Girls and Women in Sports Day earlier this month. The girls' basketball team has finished as a sectional semifinalist or better every year since 2013. Senior boys' basketball player Connor Roach earned first-team All-Big North Conference honors and was invited to play in the North Jersey All-Star Basketball Game. Track-and-field standout Connor Munson has had several great accomplishments over the past month, finishing as the Group II Pole vault champion, second place at the NJ Meet of Champions, and second place in the Nike Nationals Pentathlon. With the conclusion of the winter season, the spring programs have been practicing hard the past couple of weeks, with competitions starting next Wednesday when girls Lacoste takes on Utepa. Good luck to all the spring teams.
In visual and performing arts, the Whittington players wrapped the run of The Little Mermaid on Saturday night, followed by a recognition ceremony for seniors and the cast, crew, and pit, teacher advisors, and parent volunteers. Their production garnered record-breaking levels of attendance with their Friday show selling out entirely and almost 700 people attending their Saturday night show. Congratulations to the cast, crew, and pit, and everyone else involved in the production of the first live musical in three years. Additionally, on February 26th, the Woodies held a Meet Ariel breakfast fundraiser along with a teaser of the musical for children in the community. Art students participated in the memory project for 2022. It was entitled Nigeria: Creating a Kinder World Through Art. Their artwork is currently on display in the San Segre art gallery outside of the Hurley Theater. Sophomore Caitlin Park's ceramic leaf Change was selected to be part of the French Perspectives 2022, a virtual art exhibit through the Morris Museum.
Clubs and activities. The Italian Honor Society recently organized a Socks of Love Winter Donation Drive. Using the donations, members assembled care packages for the less fortunate. The National Honor Society also held a bake sale for Ukraine, with the proceeds going to the International Rescue Committee. The debate team had yet another successful showing at the varsity invitational competition. Olivia Larson and Marty Bostrowska broke 300 points to set a team record, and Haley Atkins was selected to judge the championship round. The academic decathlon team had a stellar performance at their state competition, earning 16 individual awards and finishing third overall. Most notably, varsity member Nick Kawasaki earned seven individual awards and was the second highest scorer in the state for his division. Lastly, the student council held their annual hallway decorating competition on February 24th, the theme being holidays. The juniors took home the win for their class with St. Patrick's Day themed hallway. That concludes our report.
Thank you. Committee reports, policy and governance, Mrs. Columbo?
Hello. Not too much to report. We will be meeting on Tuesday, March 29th, for our March meeting.
Thank you. Findson Facilities, Mr. Pontillo?
We didn't meet because Keith was busy with the budget, so no report.
Thank you. Curriculum and instruction, is there any report from that committee?
Yep. So we met on March 9th, and at that time, we met with Tracy Severance, who is the consultant we're using for the strategic planning proposal...or she gave a...I'm sorry. She gave a presentation of her proposal for the strategic planning for 2022 and 2023 school year. She shared how the planning process will work next year. Dr. Severance will identify and analyze data sourced by conducting a district-wide survey and hosting in-person input sessions with members of the Board of Ed caregivers and faculty members. One way that Dr. Severance's process...processes differs from other organizations, she manages the strategic planning, is that she will spend time soliciting feedback from multiple student groups as well. An optional three-year plan on a page will also be available for the district to reference as the district works to meet the goals identified through the strategic planning process. We also discussed the second diagnostic of the IREDDI results, and Ms. Hughes was instrumental in helping us with understanding the growth that's occurred in both reading and math at the K-5 level in comparison to our first IREDDI diagnostic. And the committee discussed the potential reasons why there's very much red observed at the high school level, particularly for the 11th and 12th graders. One reason discussed was the level of motivation of the students, and if they take the assessment seriously, considering they do not earn a grade for taking the assessment. Additionally, it's unrealistic for students who are two or more grade levels below grade level to make up several grade levels within the one academic year. The district has requested that IREDDI provide the national diagnostic results to see where Westwood aligns in comparison to other districts around the nation. The middle school scheduling consultant has been working diligently with the middle school teachers and principal, and also we had Ms. Surgeon from Human Resources meet with them. They've...Mr. Kendak gave us an update of the work that the district is doing with the scheduling consultants, who ultimately provide the district, which I believe we're at two different options that we're looking at for the middle school at this time, and the merits of including a win period with the new schedules was also discussed. We had upper elementary departmentalization on our group, where Mr. Kendak gave us an update on when and why the fifth-grade students no longer rotate to different teachers that specialize in specific content areas, and the merits and the perceived benefits of the students switching classes was discussed by the committee as well. We are going to have, on March 28th, the middle school health and PE teachers are going to be collaborating with Dr....with Judy Lobianco...Lobianco. She's going to be upset I said her name wrong, to create lesson plans that meet the updated New Jersey's standards for comprehensive health and physical education. And our next meeting will be Wednesday, April 6th. Thank you.
For negotiations, the only update is that our two teams met last week on the 15th. At this point, we're going to have a special public report on the American Heart Association fundraiser. Board members are going to go down into the seats down there, please.
Good evening, Dr. Mortimer, Dr. Romano, if you were here, Westwood Regional Board of Education, and Westwood Regional Families. On behalf...on behalf of JCF George teachers, staff, I want to present some very unique and exciting data with you this evening. Over the course of one month, Ms. Farinella spearheaded the Kids' Heart Challenge, turning all JFG students into kid heart heroes. And they focused on how to be kind to their own hearts, the hearts of others, learning about the brain and vascular health, staying healthy, eating healthy, and making a positive difference in the lives of children with special hearts. Together, our goal was to raise awareness for the physical and emotional health of our children and families while raising funds for the American Heart Association. We began our mission with a goal in mind of approximately having 140 students participate and hopefully raising $10,000. This would give us the opportunity to qualify for the Kids' Heart Challenge grant to support our health and wellness initiative. As our mission launched, our student participation quickly followed. Out of 281 JFG students, 206 participated. Our homeroom participation rate ranged from 60 to 90%, and our top kid heart hero, Matthew Wagnon, raised $931.56. With the help of our students and families, we exceeded our goal, raising $11,830.78. That has been donated to the American Heart Association. Clearly, the data called for celebration. On March 10th, we enjoyed a school-wide pajama day, and as promised, our top 15 student fundraisers swamped Ms. Farinella with silly string, which was witnessed by our entire We concluded that March afternoon feeling confident, allowing the laughs, smiles, and even the dance moves of our children, which reminded us of our purpose, the reasons we persevere, the reasons we never give up, and the reasons we remain in the field of education. And I stand here before you proud, and I am honored, and I thank Ms. Farinella, who is unfortunately not with us this evening, she's not feeling well, and all her colleagues who came to support her that are sitting in the back, for their unwavering support, their excellent sportsmanship, and the dedication they not only emulated for our children and our school community, but the support that they showed each other. The countless takeaways from this event were paramount. It was evident with the commitment, motivation, and support, our children are capable of not only attaining our goals and expectations, but exceeding them. To say the past two years has been challenging is an understatement, but our ship is finally sailing in calmer waters, and the music is leading us toward brighter days. Our hearts... Our hearts at JFG are officially beating stronger with the culture and climate of JFG driving our mantra to just focus on growing. They say a picture speaks a thousand words, and I'm humbled and proud to share this short presentation with you that will hopefully give you the exact feeling of the happiness, sense of accomplishment, and the fun that was had on the blacktop that afternoon. In conclusion, I am confident that the smiles, excitement, and the wealth of opportunities that we continue to provide our children are exactly what makes this report tonight so special. So, thank you.
Good evening. I apologize for being late. I had an event for one of my children. So, thank you to Roberta for taking over while I was at that event. We're moving on to public forum. During this portion of the meeting, district residents and staff are invited to address the Board of Education on any topics specifically addressed in this agenda or on any other questions, comments, or concerns that may be in respect to the operation of their schools. The board requests that individuals sign the speaker's list, giving name and address, and ask that all remarks be directed to the board as a whole, not to individuals. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding personnel matters are discouraged and cannot be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. If a matter concerning a district staff member is of interest or concern to a resident, the matter should be referred to the responsible building principal, superintendent of schools, or the Board of Education, either by telephone, letter, or email. Although the board may not respond to items raised during the public forum, all public comments will be considered and may be discussed tonight under the appropriate agenda items or new business at this meeting. At subsequent meetings, under old business or during a board committee meeting, if appropriate. Each speaker's statement will be limited to five minutes in duration. The public forum will be limited to one hour in duration. So, if anybody would like to speak, please come to the podium, sign in, name and address. Thank you. Is that better? Hold now. So, for the first time, I stand before you to direct your attention and ask for your intervention with the very serious concerns I have regarding the school environment at Brookside Elementary. There is a massive failure to properly teach and mold children into healthy, mutually respectful, socially appropriate people with a code of conduct. There is a lack of guidance and discipline of misbehaved students, and the administration does not seem to be able to support this environment or the teachers in setting the right tone for the school. Over the course of the school year, there grew in my daughter's classroom a malevolence among the students, started by a few who went unmanaged and became adopted by the others, who quickly understood that they either get in line with the abusers or they become one of the victims. This had a severe and pervasive impact on my very gentle and sweet-natured little girl. This is an ordinary bullying, which in and of itself is disgraceful and unacceptable. This is a level of maladaptive behaviors that has created a sociopathy that is inexclusively damaging and toxic. I'm not talking about her not having a playmate during recess. I'm talking about her deliberate exclusion as a quiet threat to others who don't get in line. I'm not talking about someone not being her friend because they don't have the same interests. I'm talking about smear campaigns that encourage other children to make her a target. I'm not talking about teasing. I'm talking about cruel, manipulative game-playing and ganging that left my daughter for over six weeks sobbing for literally hours every Sunday night about how she didn't want to return to school, from hurt, frustration, helplessness, unhappiness, and finally, hopelessness. I'm sure I sound extreme, but if any of you had a conversation with my daughter, you would be appalled and ashamed about what she endured at Brookside. I did speak to the teachers, and I did escalate my concerns, and in one case, I filed a formal complaint to no improvement in her circumstances. The school counselor charged with investigating my complaint failed to respond to me with the results until I reminded her, even though she was legally obligated to. Because of these reasons, I was forced to remove my daughter three months before the end of the year and put her in a private school. I feel strongly that I shouldn't have had to do this. Not only was this abuse a psychological burden on her that she should never have to bear, but financially, it's a burden on my husband and I that we shouldn't have to bear considering the considerable taxes we pay. And by the way, when I withdrew her, no one from Brookside even so much had sent me an email to ask me why. Although I am only one voice, I represent many others. It wasn't until I made the drastic move to pull my daughter out that I became aware of how deeply pervasive this is when other parents reached out to share their very similar circumstances. Our children deserve better than to be in a school environment that holds them hostage rather than sets them free. Education in America especially is the great equalizer. It is the lever by which people have the ability to improve their circumstances and why the rest of the world still strives to come to the United States despite our many challenges. Our strong education is the only method that destroys class systems, hierarchy, prejudice, bigotry, racism, gender bias, ignorance, and most of all, builds the character our children need to grow up and navigate in increasingly complex world. None of this can happen when their formative years are spent in a hostile environment at school. With the tax money and resources available to it, this district should be able to provide it, and every child is given a wonderful education in a psychologically safe environment. Not just children with parents like me who have the money to ensure it. A healthy educational environment is every child's right in this country, not a privilege. With your support, I beseech the school board and challenge our district to take real steps to adjust these issues. I don't have the knowledge about why this is happening. I only know beyond a shadow of a doubt that it is. I urge you to look deeply into Brookside and understand why this environment currently is tolerated. And after two difficult years, I hope for a real effort that needs to be made by our board to reorient our children to understand what it means to be in a community, to have character, to have mutual responsibility, and to uphold the expectations of how we treat one another so that they feel safe and they feel available to learn. Thank you very much for listening to me, and do you have any questions for me? Thank you. I really appreciate your time.
Hi, I'm Michelle. My daughter also goes to Brookside. I wasn't planning on speaking, so I don't have a-
Sorry, excuse me. Can you just name an address for the record?
Michelle Lyons. I'm not going to be as eloquent as the last speaker, but we are in this-
Can you state your address for the record, please?
Sixteen Lyons Place, the same as my last name, L-Y-O-N-S. So, right now, I am in the middle of an appeal for the same girls that behind me is doing this. My daughter is the same thing, crying, doesn't want to go to school, has panic attacks. She told me on Friday, just this past Friday, when she got in the car, I'm going to speak of recent because Dr. Mortimer already got some stuff from us. On Friday, when she got in the car, she said, "Everybody in fifth grade hates me, except a few of my friends." There, these five girls, and I won't mention names, at Brookside have been doing this for years. My daughter is not the only one. We have discussed pulling her. And no matter how many times we write the principal, we get the same thing. Well, on Monday, she came home from school because, like she said, "If you don't participate, you will be the target." So, they got, these kids are spread out between three fifth-grade classes. So, you have two in one class, two in another class, and the leader is in my daughter's class, who I have requested that she be removed from her class. They asked me, "Well, how would you feel if we moved your daughter?" I said, "Why should my daughter be moved from the class? She is not the problem." We have discussed this extensively with the school. There's nothing, nothing's happening. They knocked it up to, I would assume that I'm just an exaggerating, overbearing mother, when in fact, my daughter comes home crying. My daughter cries at night. She doesn't want to go to school the next day. She has, and just like her daughter, my daughter has, on Sundays, it's a whole nother ballgame. It's crying, and in the beginning, I would say, "What are you crying about?" She says, "Nothing, it's the schoolwork." She was afraid to tell me because she didn't want me to say something because she was scared. She was afraid that all of the fifth graders were going to come after her. Do you know how much that hurts as a mother? And like she said, you try to raise your kids to be kind and nice, to care about other kids. She actually wants to start an anti-bullying in the school. That's what she wants to do. On Monday, when I picked her up from school, now, this is not the five girls, but one of the, a boy there. Now, I work for a school, okay? I run a cafeteria in the school. So, I know, I take six-hour course to be certified. Every year, we learn about anti-bullying and all this other stuff. And she came back and said, well, I won't say his name here, but he said, "Mom, did you say to the kids that you were going to kill and murder them?" Now, if a parent wanted to make a big deal, if one of these parents wanted to make a big deal, they can get me fired from my job. I'm a single mother. Do you know what that would do to me? That would wreck me. These kids are very vicious. They surrounded my daughter on the blacktop, and I asked the question, "Where was the teacher's aide?" And she was standing there, but she wasn't paying attention. They surrounded her. Now, these girls know her since kindergarten, surrounded her, and were asking her and making fun of her name. Then, my daughter did what I told her to do, ignore them and walk away. Well, she ran away. They broke up into separate groups and surrounded her and asked her if she was a lesbian, if she was bi, or if she was non-binary. And I was like, "This is fifth grade." And when I went to them, they said it was HIV, right? Which I think it is, because you're not, in this day and age, you're not supposed to ask somebody that question. So, they asked her that question, and they knocked it up to, well, the girls knew they were bullying, but they didn't know the effect it would have on your child. I am telling you, I am not a hysterical mother. I am a mother who is telling you, your daughter has been damaged because of this, and we are thinking about pulling her. The only thing that's going to happen with Westwood-
Mrs. Lyons, I'm sorry, your time is up.
You're going to lose a lot of smart students because these kids are going after the timid, the nice, the ones that won't stick up for themselves.
Mrs. Lyons, I know you exceeded your time. I have to stop you, I'm sorry.
If there isn't anyone else that would like to speak, I'm going to go ahead and close public session.
public session.
So, I want to thank the parents for coming out tonight and speaking. I was not entirely aware of the situation. I heard a piece of it, but I'm not entirely aware of the situation, so I would promise you that tomorrow morning, first thing, I will check into it, I will see what's going on. You know, I didn't hear a specific question, usually I only respond if there's a question, but I just want you to know that you've been heard tonight and that I'm sorry you're having these experiences and I'm sorry that your children are having these experiences and I will look into it first thing tomorrow.
Roberta, can you move annual motions? Item number sixteen. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to move motion A as listed on the agenda for annual motions, which is increasing the substitute nurse pay and the substitute teacher pay.
Can I have a second? A second. Stacy Price? Discussion?
I would just add, explain to the board that I put this on the, uh, on the agenda because we ra- I know we just raised the rates for the subs not that long ago. We only were able to get seven additional subs as a result of raising that rate. It was, you know, kind of an intermediary step. The fact that it's still not serving our needs, I think we need to go up to the 150 a day, which is kind of what the, some of the other districts are offering to help us out. And the request for the additional pay for the sub nurses came from head nurse Deb Penn, who said the same thing.
Any other discussion on the increase in sub rate for the district? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Columbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sembler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Administration, administrative and governance, item number seventeen on the agenda. Mr. McAllister, can you move that, please?
Certainly. Yes, I'd like to move items A through D as indicated on the agenda. A through C. A through C, my mistake.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Roberta, any discussion on administrative and governance, items A through C as listed on the agenda? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Columbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Uh, I'm gonna abstain on A and then B and C, yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sembler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, item number eighteen on the agenda policy. Mrs. Columbo, can you please move that?
I'd like to make a motion to move agenda item A.
Can I have a second? Mrs. Peterson, any discussion on that item? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Columbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sembler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Finance and facilities.
No, personnel.
Personnel. Item number nineteen, Mrs. Hanlon?
Thank you, Mrs. Sembler. I'd like to move agenda items A through R with the notes on your short sheet as to what was changed. The public does have the correct motions.
Can I have a second, Mrs. Columbo? Any discussion on personnel? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Columbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sembler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, now, finance and facilities. Mr. Pontillo?
Thank you. Looking through the agenda, and we, I mentioned earlier, we didn't have a finance and facilities meeting and the roof project overage and the bathroom project and overage has not been discussed in committee and I don't feel comfortable moving forward on those until we have discussion in committee on that. I would actually like to separate out motions A-
Mr. Pontillo?
Yeah.
Can you make the motion and then we'll have discussion after?
Well, I don't want to move them, so, no. So, if, if I have the floor, I'm making a motion to move part of it, but not all of them. I'd like to separate them out. So if everyone could hear out my motion and see if I got a second, I would like to see if we can do that. If that's okay.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to separate out items A, W, X, Y, and Z for a separate discussion. That being the budgetary items attached in section A. The section W is the Jesse F. George school roof, X being the seventy thousand dollar additional monies for that, Y being the Berkeley School bathroom and Z being the seventy eight hundred dollar additional amount for the bathroom. So I'd be making a motion to separate those out for discussion purposes, separate and move items B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V. I'm not going to finish, but A-A and B-B. I feel like I'm doing the alphabet here. So again, it would be move items B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, A-A and B-B. We would be separating out the five, A, yes, W, X, Y, and Z.
So B through V and A-A, B-B. Okay.
Can I have a second, please? Mrs. Hanlon? Any discussion on items B through V and A-A, B-B? Discussion on the, those items?
Just want to point out the canceling of the, uh, the checks, the old outstanding checks was part of the audit recommendation. Sorry, that's item M.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Columbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sembler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Mr. Pontillo?
Of the remaining five, I think we should separate them into their respective categories, one being item A, one being items W and X, and then the other item being Y and Z. So, I would like to package two of them together however, and I think that W, X, Y, and Z should go back to the finance and facilities committing, committee for a discussion considering the overage amounts and kind of understanding why that happened. This is the first we're seeing it tonight. So I think that it deserves some due diligence, that we've talked about supply chain issues, the cost of construction and the other problems associated with some of the things going on right now. We might be better served waiting a period of time and rebidding these projects and not dipping into the capital reserves to, uh, to complete that. But I think that's a further discussion that should come out of the committee.
It's, I think we need, there's no motion on the floor, but I think you need to pass the motion. Is there a motion, Mr. Pontillo? I'm just trying to, I, I understand your concern.
I think it is a motion, yeah. I think the motion is, is to table items W, X, Y, and Z, send them back to the committee for review prior to putting them before the board for approval. So I would make a motion to take W, X, Y, and Z and table them for going back to the committee for review.
Is there a second on the floor to table those items?
There's a, there's a, there's a motion on the floor. Is, we need to know if there's a second. If there's no second, then someone can ma-
Second. Mrs. Peterson? Discussion? Mrs. Columbo?
If we table it, um, does that affect the budget, Mr. Rosado?
Well, right now, you're, you're discussing the bid item?
X, Y, Z, the, yeah, like so-
So you're discussing the two bid projects. So, I mean, if you guys want me to weigh in, I can, I can review that real quick.
Yes.
So, we received the two bids, we were reviewing the items with the attorney, the attorney got back to us, the, the, when regards to the roof, the lowest bidder was, was, uh, did not have a compliant bid, so we had to throw out the lowest bidder, went to the second lowest bidder. The, um, the budget was for the base bid and I guess I should have, I was going to explain that during this, tonight's meeting. You know, we, we do our bids and we, we push them and I know we, we try to get them on the meetings, but the base bid was within budget. We were looking to capitalize an alternate that we had on that bid. The alternate would be another portion of the roof, so the base bid, uh, project for that roof was the back end wing of George School, the, where the, I guess the upper grades, three, four, and five reside in. The alternate that we're looking to add along with that would be the, um, I think it's, I think it's the gym roof above the, uh, above the new curtain walls we just did last year. So the reason we wanted to do that is because we just added that. So, the bids came in, they, uh, talking to the architect, they were within our, our means, but we would need to increase because we didn't account for that second alternate in that, um, original, um, uh, planning, I mean budgeting for the roof. With regards to the Berkeley bathroom, um, the, again, once again, the lowest bidder was not the responsible bidder and the bid was thrown out. The next bidder came in and the total bid was over the, uh, the bid amount. And the other, and so I'm requesting to go over to exceed so that we can move forward on that. One thing I didn't mention is on both bids, we do have an allowance built in on the, on these projects. And in the bathroom project, I think it's an allowance of twenty-five thousand for unforeseen items. So, yes, we, we are over, but we still have an allowance that we, uh, we might get back at the end if it's, if, if there is no issues. So, um, I'm, I'm requesting the withdrawal of seventy-eight hundred dollars from capital reserve so that we can move forward with the project and complete something that is much needed at Berkeley School. In discussion with, uh, the architect, if we were to throw out the bids and go out to rebid, we would not be able to get the jobs completed by this summer because it will impact, the impact that it, the delays and everything else. So that's kind of why I'm requesting to exceed the bid threshold. Questions?
Mr. McAllister? Mr. Pontillo?
So, you, you kind of confirmed what I was trying to say, that there was no discussion on these overages in committee. And that's why we have the committee, so it's a process issue for me. We talked about at the last meeting how tight the budget was this year, whether we're going to go over, how far over two percent we're going to go, or three point five nine, what the impact of that is and, and how all of the things that come together, what we're buying and what we're paying for it. So, I don't know that it's a good idea to go eighty thousand dollars over, over, um, over budget and pull that out of capital reserve. So, you know, we shouldn't just have it placed before us with absolutely no foreknowledge, no discussion and say, "Here, approve this," because I think it's a good idea. So I think it should go back to committee for discussion. Thank you.
Mrs. Price?
The only thing that I would point out is that we've had a couple of conversations about the, following the proper process about items that we want to discuss and, and how they should go through and whether or not, you know, how our discussions are, are done either via email and things like that. So if we're going to be, and Dr. Romano had brought it up at the last meeting, so if we're going to want to be on point with following proper process and procedure, then we need to do that across the board, not just where it's, um, not just hodgepodge and here and there. We should be following the proper procedure through for all, for everything.
Mrs. Columbo or Mrs. Hanlon?
So I agree with process, um, but I guess, so you're saying it's eighty thousand over? Eighty thousand or seventy?
Combined, it's about seventy-eight thousand total for the two projects.
My, I guess my worry in this case is because it's a roof for the school and I'm concerned that the timing, because we saw what happened to Washington this year with their flood and the worry is if we don't spend this money, and I, and I get it with the process, because that's what we've been saying, you know, all year, but I'm afraid of missing out on fixing something and then we're missing the opportunity and then in next fall, you know, we have another storm or something and, um, the roof goes in or something happens, like that's my worry. So, I think we're having an open discussion, like kind of what you would have at facilities, so, you know, if we have to take a little more time to kind of hash it out, all of us, but I, I think it's important to get, get the roof on Jesse George. It's not, like, it's not something we haven't been talking about for a long time about making these adjustments, um, to the school. So I, I, I get what you guys are saying about process, but I don't think it's came from left field that we need this, so.
Mr. Rosado would like to speak.
Um, so I, I, I know you, you brought up process, I, I want to discuss it and hit the process. So, um, the process of the projects go through, do go through committee. And as we go through, last year, we went through committee, we discussed what projects we want to go forward and move forward with. The budget, the board then approves those projects in the budget cycle. Those budgets are then, um, once they're approved, then that's the instruction for me to move forward on the projects. I go forward and move on the projects. At that point in time, that's where I think those projects leave the committee set, section and come into the board format. So, I don't think it's the proper process for a project, this project, when the, the bids come back is to go into a committee, but more here and, and discussion with the board to determine whether or not they want to move forward on it. I think that is the proper process for the, the bids because we all agreed we want to do the roofs. That was agreed on, uh, when we approved the last budget. So now we're moving to the next step. We went forward, we bring it to the board and this is- So, now we're moving to the next step. We went forward, we bring it to the board, and this is where I believe we do have that discussion. And, and that's why during my report, I stated, we have those, the recommendation, the administration and recommendation is to move forward on the project. If the board decides they don't want to, then that's where the, the vote will go and, and get, and, and you can vote against it. So, I mean, I, I, I believe we are following a process, and I understand where you're coming from, but I know, we need to also move on, on a pro, if we have to wait for a committee then to go to, to go to a board, it is going to delay the process. And like I said, I, I think now we just have the discussion. If we want to move forward the project, we don't. If, we go forward. If we don't, we end it here and we put it to bed.
Can you just clarify and explain again why this particular project has now become over budget, 80,000?
I, I think with anything moving forward, due to COVID, supply chains, every, every, everything that is, it has increased in, in pricing. It's, you know, we, again, we developed this budget last April, was approved. So, it's almost, it's a year old, that number. And, and things have happened. I mean, you know, roof particularly is a lot of petroleum, and we've seen where oil prices are now. It's not that, it's not, the base bid, like I said, is not over budget, though. I, what I'm recommending is a base bid and, and taking advantage of the, the, one of the other alternates that were placed. We put out four alternates on that bid to see where pricing come, came in for the roof. And quite frankly, the Berkeley bathroom, $7,800, I think is within budget. It's, it's over, yes, I agree, but it's in within means. I mean, we are doing estimates based on numbers at the, a given point in time. So, that, you know, 7,800 i- is, is nothing in comparison. It's, it's minuscule. It's, it's, it's not.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Thank you. Right. The, the Berkeley bathroom going over by $7,000, to me, that, I, I don't know why we would be arguing that. That's a project that we need, number one, for the staff. Number two, we've been talking about it for years, and we're finally able to, now that we are out of COVID, we're able to go ahead and move forward with it. And we all know the prices are going up. They're going up on everything. Mr. Rosado has explained to us regarding George School that he's adding a alternate. In all due respect, it doesn't normally go back to committee. This is a, yes, it goes, it went to committee initially, and we were the ones who agreed to, to, you know, bring it to the full board, but that is why we're here now. The full board is to have the conversation. I don't think it should go back to committee, for committee to decide whether or not it's okay for us as a full board to, you know, that's a lot of ping ponging. If, if these were projects that were not discussed, then I would say process wasn't followed. These are projects that were discussed, and that is where the B, is, is giving us an explanation why it's over. You know, I, I understand frustration in, in the dollar amount that we're talking about, but these are extraordinary times, whether we like it or not. Roofing is something we struggle with every year. How many roofs can we get done because of the cost factor of roofing? I would not like to see this returned back into committee because then we're basically saying that over the fact that prices have gone up, we're not willing to move forward with repairing a roof on the school. It'll go back to committee. Most likely, it would move, come back again, i- is what I truly think would happen. And I don't think that's really fair to the district as a whole, nor the administrators, to do it that way. This is the time to have the discussion amongst all of us as, as to moving it forward.
Mr. Pontilla?
So, I think we know historically, right now is the worst time in the world to build. The roofing industry was one of the largest impacted trades with COVID. With the power outage and, and the freeze in Texas there, they lost the factories that make the pitched ISO board, which is why roofing's become so expensive for a, a flat roof. I know because I have one, and I experienced a problem last year with it. What we know about the George School flood is that there was a clogged pipe. Didn't leak through, I'm sorry, Washington, correct. It leaked through the pipe, not the roof. It's the worst time to do the job. Just because the bid came in over doesn't mean we should just automatically do the job. There may be an assessment we could have done to determine what the longevity of that section of roof is. We have none of that information before us tonight. I would think that if someone was coming with a comprehensive report to explain to why we should be doing this, that would be included, maybe the square footage numbers, so we can understand what the cost per, per square foot went up. And you can shake your head and throw your hands all you'd like, but the truth of the matter is, is that committees make recommendations. So, I don't, I don't see that it's a problem to go back to committee. So, it would have been nice if I had this earlier, to have a better discussion about it, but it's, it's not even complete information to make a decision on. And when we're dealing with a tight budget, throwing $80,000 around is, is, would be irresponsible.
Mrs. Peck?
I have no voice. I'll try. But when was, when was the last time the roof was replaced? And which other schools have already been replaced?
We are, we have done roof replacement probably every year. We, we tried to knock out sections of, of one school because, because of the, the mess and everything else. We tried not to take out too many schools during the year. As in the 2022, 23 budget, we actually have two roofs going on. We have the Washington and Berkeley. So, we, it's just, we just going through our cycle, going through our thing. We have two other sections at George School that are not approved, that still, that need replacement as well. I mean, we can ask the, the principal if there's water coming through the roofs.
Are there any issues with the roof? Like, is it leaking or is it?
All, all are, the roofs are leaking everywhere. I mean, that's not, it, that happens, and it's over time. And we're at the point, you know, our roofs are blistering, and, and it's at the point of, of, of replacement. I mean, we, we try, we are being proactive in replacing our roofs and much of our infrastructure, so.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yeah, when, when it comes to roofs, Mr. Rosado only puts the roofs on, especially in a town like this. I'm, if I remember right, there were other roofs that could have been done, but you said they, they weren't in the same condition, that these were the roofs we needed to do, correct?
Yeah, we, we focused on the base bid for the George roof because we're doing that roofing project, and the numbers came in. And yes, I know it's 70,000. It's a lot of money. In relation, that section of the roof came in, that was at $121,000 for that section over the, the gym. So, that's, that 70,000 is, is part, is due to the addition of the, the one section roof that we did not have planned for. So.
And this is the reason why we put, we have money in capital reserve. These are roofs. These are not frills. These are roofs. I understand that you'd prefer to not spend extra money, and you're fully aware of how mu, how things are higher priced, you know, due to your own personal relationship with, with buildings. But, you know, while we don't like to throw money around, again, these are roofs, roofs that were on the list that need to be replaced. These are not, we can hold, you know, hold off for several years. Unless I'm wrong, and Mr. Rosado can correct me, but I believe these were roofs that we need to do. He's asking the board to, to do the additional.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to stay within budget, we can just do the base bid. I mean, that's, that's always an option also. I'm just putting forward the administrative recommendation to, to continue and to, you know, let, let's move forward. I mean, it looks like the board was interested in moving forward and progressing and, and improving facilities. I saw an opportunity, and that's why I, I, I put it for, forward tonight.
So, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Price?
We're gonna, we're gonna, we'll just, please excuse my ADHD. So, I don't, maybe I misunderstood something in the conversation. Our original, the original bid was on a section of the roof, and the additional 70,000 is to expand the project? Is that what you just said? I just, okay.
Thank you. Mrs. Columbo?
Can I make a motion to?
There's a motion on the floor.
Are we allowed to or there's more?
There's a motion on the floor right now.
Oh, so we have to close that. Okay, okay.
So, I mean, there's a discussion open. So, if you want to close discussion, start.
I, I just have a couple.
Yeah, when she's on, okay, sorry.
So, how, I, I just have a couple of questions. How long is this bid good for before it would have to go back out to bid? If we did table this, is this, is this, go ahead.
It's, we have 60 days.
Okay, and when is the next Finance and Facilities meeting?
We, we don't have a date because we, we haven't scheduled because Keith's been busy with the budget. But I'd be happy to send an email out to get one on the calendar, within the next 60 days, before the next board meeting.
If this was to be tabled, and they put it back into Finance and Facilities to further discuss the needs assessment for replacing this roof, would it hold this project? I mean, the bid is good for 60 days. If you have the meeting within that time period, could we still hold this bid?
The bids came in on the 12th, I believe.
I think if it's important to the Finance and Facilities.
I, I, we have the 60 days from there. I just, you know, we can hold, I, the, my only concern would be the timing and getting on the schedule because now is the time that the roof, so if, whether or not we can get on schedule to have the job done this summer. If we can't have it done this summer, then I, we can't, I don't know if I can award it because it's this year's money. I gotta find, I gotta get clarification on that.
Okay, so our next board meeting is April 21st?
28th.
21st, we have a special meeting. Can we, can we move items on that meeting? The special public meeting that we're having on the 21st?
It can, if, that's the will of the board, yes.
If we.
I, I will express concerns, but yes, of, of, of being able to secure and lock down a date. That's my only concern.
Because you want the work done this summer.
This summer, yes.
So, it doesn't interfere with the school in September.
Because, you know, it's, 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 it's hard because it's, roofs are not easy. They're not, they're not pretty jobs. And, you know, we have to make moves, like the, the summer program. I know we technically, the, the summer camp will move to Brookside so that it's available. It's just, it's just logistical planning in the end. Sorry, we obviously don't want students in the building when we're doing this work because it's not a place to be in, or, or staff. So.
So, although the bid is good for 60 days, and we, the concern is getting, accepting the bid and getting it on the calendar before the summer, if we wait until April 21st to move this?
Yeah, I, we could move it to the 21st if that's the will of the board. I have no problem with that. It's just I'm concerned about getting on the schedule. I would be concerned about getting on the schedule. That would be my own concern.
I'm sorry, just one more follow-up question. So, with this bid, there's no guarantee they're getting on the schedule? Did they give you, if we accept this bid by here, we will be on their schedule for the summer?
We have it now, and so it can happen in the summer. I, the concern would be securing the, the materials and whether or not, if they come back and say, I can't secure the materials now. Earlier, obviously, we, we give them the contract, if the contract's issued, yes. It would be a concern.
So, we, we would be, we would be approving a bid that we didn't know could get done over the summer because we don't know whether or not they'll be able to secure the materials if we accept this bid?
Potentially, but the longer we wait, the harder it will be, yes.
Right, even if we approve it tonight?
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Peck?
Can I just ask what additional information we need to help make the decision?
Well, I'd, I'd like to see an assessment of the roof from the guy in charge of building and grounds. I'd like to know how many square foot we're doing. I'd like to actually understand the scope of work that we're doing. None of that's here. I think it'd be helpful to understand that before you go and spend an extra $70,000 out of cap reserve. Again, we know that the costs are up for material. We know that the costs are up for the labor. We know that the price of petroleum products is going to go through the roof. So, if we're looking at this from a fiscal perspective, you know, maybe some limited repairs if there's some leaks on the roof or there's some bubbling, which is simple, which could probably be done by someone on, on our own staff. And maybe we maximize it and get better bang for our buck down the road when the prices come down, when the petroleum prices come down, maybe when there's like a, a market readjustment, which it seems like we're heading towards. I just think that, you know, just because a bid came in 80 grand over, 70 grand over, doesn't make it a good idea. So, I think there are a lot of things that we can discuss about the project, actually, and better understand the implications of the decision we're making.
I, I just want to clarify, the base bid did not go over. The additional roof is what pushed it over. So, we had, our, our budget number was within budget, but the addition of the alternate is what's put, put it over.
Wouldn't that then be a discussion to have, had in committee instead of just putting it before us in the board tonight? I would go back to my original argument of process. This is the will of the board, like you said, not the will of Keith. So.
It's, it's, the, the board has assigned me to administer the district. I put forth my recommendation to the board.
Okay, but never anybody in the Finance Committee. Thanks, Keith. Appreciate that.
Mr. Pontilla, with all due respect.
Don't, 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 don't try to explain anything to me, Keith. You can be quiet. Thank you.
I think both of you need to stop, if I'm being honest. When we talk about how people perceive this board, this is what they're talking about. We can make comments that are veiled sarcastic jabs, and it's obvious what they are. It doesn't serve anybody's purposes. From either one of you, I suggest, if there's more to discuss about the motion, we discuss it. If not, I am prepared to make a motion that we close discussion and vote on tabling this, one way or the other.
Is there any other discussion on the item? Mrs. Peck?
Can we vote to approve the original piece and then add on the second piece after Finance and Facilities, our policy, Finance and Facilities has a chance to review it?
Look, currently, there's a motion on the table to table the motion. So, if, I know, and there's a second motion where Miss, Mr. McAllister made to ta, to, to table, close this.
To be clear, I did not make that motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I am ready to make that motion.
I, I'm not ready. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm struggling with this. So, I just have a couple more questions. Is, is, so this was, this project was discussed. I think the confusion is when I asked, why are we over? Originally, it was said that because gas prices went up and, you know, on, on, on things. And now we're confused because the 80,000 is now an additional part of the roof. So, I think, can you just clarify that for everybody? Why it's over because?
The, well, we were talking about both projects, yes.
Okay.
I did say that prices in general are, have increased due to COVID and related. We have a base bid. I have three alternates. Alternate one was the section over the media center. Alternate two was a section over the main office. Alternate three was a section over the, the gym. The base bid is within the constraints of the budget that was proposed. Alternate three, again, because I, we, we know, it was trying to capitalize on them already being on site and, and, and using, if, if, if we want to enter this budget, enter this resolution and take off alternate three, and just do talk about the base, that's also something we can do.
Mrs. Columbo?
I was just going to make a motion to close the discussion, or close the motion? Close discussion. Thanks.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Okay, so we're voting on tabling the motions.
W, X, Y, Z.
Mrs. Columbo?
No.
Mrs. Hanlon?
No.
Mr. McAllister?
No.
Mrs. Peck? It's been, discussion's been closed, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sembler?
I'm really torn on this. I think because I am so torn on it, it, it needs to be looked into further. So I'm going to say yes, let's table it.
Motion's tabled. So we have, motion A is left on the table.
I'm pretty sure you guys don't want me to talk about motion A, so I'm not going to start out to move it. I can get into the reasons why during discussion. So if somebody else would like to do that, feel free.
Sure, as a member of the committee, Mrs. Sembler, I'll move motion A on the agenda.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Columbo? Discussion. Does anyone have any discussion on item A under finance and facilities?
So before we get into it, I wanted just to go over some of the changes that have been occurring. Up to this afternoon, I was on the phone with county office. So I sent, everyone received and had an opportunity to review the information I sent out last Friday of the updates and changes. I just did a whole, I, I think I worded everything and gave you enough information to see what the changes were from what you originally received to where we're at today. One item I wanted to point out, Chapter 44 was a law enacted in which the state had created a new health benefit program. And the law was stated that by creation of this new health program, any savings that was realized by creating this new plan would be a reduction to the tax levy for the districts. That information was given to us on March 11th with, 11th, state aid came out along with the state aid. There was concerns about how the state calculated the number. Districts had an opportunity to appeal. In Bergen County, I believe 41 of the 45 districts that were impacted appealed. The county office is reviewing that and I was informed today that they will more than likely go with the recommendations of the schools on the recalculation of, of the, of based, of the appeals that were sent in. And, but we will not get those, that information until later and we will not be able to make any changes until the April 28th budget. I, I, I'm still waiting more. They're going to supply us more information. I don't have it yet, but I'm working with the information I have available to me. So this is something new that's going on. I actually have my roundtable meeting tomorrow in which they're going to discuss more. The executive county superintendent and the executive county school business official will be discussing this tomorrow at my roundtable meeting. So with the appeal process, I, the, the reduction to the tax base goes from 288 to 99,000 based on my district's calculations. What that means is they, they take our current year tax base and they reduce it by that amount. And that's your new tax base where you base your 2% off. Along with that, we had state aid increase $441,000 over last year. From last meeting, March 3rd, Dr. Mortimer went through her three areas of concern and what she wanted to go through. And the board, the board was in consensus that we would, they were okay with going over the 2% and, and utilizing cap reserves to offset those costs. So with that, we, we had some additional changes that, that occurred or, and stuff that we had to take in consideration. So I, on that spreadsheet, the second sheet I gave you, that shows you the, the detail. The top half is what was discussed at the last meeting with Dr. Mortimer. Some of, some of the things that changed. In reviewing the, the changes the board made this current year with the aides' salaries and, and increases and going into next year, and with the assumption that we will be able to fill all our aide positions for the upcoming year because we currently still can't fill our positions, we, we had to take into account the increases that were made. We were discussing with Jessica Glock from the Assistant Director of Special Services, HR. I reviewed this with HR Barbara in my office and I know we discussed it with Jill also. We're, we're thinking of changing the, the structure and going away from the hourly rate to assign more of a, an annual rate. And with that annual rate, also include extra days for professional development that were needed so that we can expand their, their work year. So with that current rate and then the given and projected increase for the upcoming year, the, the total impact to the district was an increase of 181,000 on the budget. The, as discussed tonight, the sub-rate, Dr. Mortimer's recommendation that was approved tonight, increasing to 140 to 150. We have not touched our subrates in years. So we always based it on the old rate. We average anywhere during a normal year and we went back through our, our, our data of our daily fill rate. We, we average about 20 subs a day. And with the rate that we had in there, we would be unable to, to cover that. So we were running at a deficit, so we had to increase the, the sub rates, lines to, you know, to sustain those increases that we are experiencing, you know, we need to do to, to experience our shortage. So that impact was 169,000. I stated at the last meeting that the insurance, I was still waiting the numbers. I got the numbers. We, the insurance rates are anticipated to increase in our budget of an additional $56,000. With the hiring of the new director of technology, we, we, and the assumption of taking on the role of the, some of the security, we, we're, we put a stipend for security, but it's not really stipend, it's built into the salary. But we needed to increase to cover that additional salary because that's not the amount that we had budgeted initially. Because we had the old director budget salary, so we had to increase that amount. We have increases to additional support members' salaries, increased to 9,100. We had the asbestos abatement work, professionals work. That's additional capital improvement, but that was something that wasn't included in there. We missed that. The, that's for the, the actual guys to take the air sampling when they're doing the abatement work. The board agreed to increase capital improvements for the dugouts, that was 5,000. The additional increase, and then you could see the additional increases for the other projects that was discussed that wanted to be moved. So that impacted our budget, we had to increase that budget. We also moved out monies that we had in that, on the top, we had it above in the operating. We stated we're part of, actually grant funded, so we moved out that portion that's grant funded. Those are the projects for the electrical panels and for the Brookside unit replacement. We moved that down. Also, we included a small withdrawal from capital reserve in case we do experience any overages for the, those electrical and unit projects because we're, we're taking assumptions and we're hoping. So we just wanted to make sure that we listed a withdrawal from capital reserve so that we would be able to withdraw from capital reserve in the year when, when bids come in if the board so chooses. So total, that impact, impacted the, the total budget. Obviously, we had a net decrease of 705,000 because we moved 1.4 out. But we did add an additional 723,000 additional appropriations from the original submission that was sent out. The impact on tax levy is, overall impact from the current year tax levy to next year's tax levy is 2.56% increase up from year to year. So I'll leave that there and I would take any questions now.
Any discussion on the motion on the floor? This is to move item A under finance and facilities, the total base budget. Mrs. Peterson?
Thank you. So I actually have a few questions or comments. I'll try to break them down one by one. So the first one, you know, we've mentioned a few times, various people, just the cost of goods going up. We know we're in a period of extremely high inflation. The cost of commodities has skyrocketed. So just wondering, with the capital projects that we currently have budgeted, do we have any type of cushion baked into the budget? Because from my perspective, I think it may be unlikely or may be difficult to complete some of these projects a year out from now with the, the current budgeted amount, given the inflation and just the economic environment that we see.
So, a- as I stated, we, because we're withdrawing these funds from capital reserve and we already as a board agreed to withdraw the funds from capital reserve and the projects are listed in the budget when they get approved in, in April, that's, that gives us the flexibility, a leeway to withdraw more money from capital reserve. That's kind of like what we were discussing with the other projects, that, that gives, that affords us the opportunity. That is the cushion that we need to build in for the unpredicted future.
Got it, that's helpful. So my, my second thing, and I know you've been really busy with the budget, Keith, so I'm not trying to keep harping on this. But, you know, I've brought up a couple of times in the past, just the opportunity to invest the district's cash that's sitting on the balance sheet. And I see, you know, you have some revenue changes on the most recent material that you provided to us on, on Friday, but I didn't see any kind of placeholder for, you know, proposed or potential investment income. And I, I still think, you know, that is a huge opportunity that we're missing out on right now. And even if, you know, we don't have time to look into more complex options, at the very minimum, I think that we could at least lock into some short, sort of short-term fixed rate, you know, investment vehicle that would generate at a minimum, you know, one and a half to 2%, which would give us, you know, another 500K or so in, in revenue.
Yeah, so I'm, I actually did some work on that. I was, I've spoken to bond council, I've spoken to our financial advisor. They put me in touch with some banks, investment areas. I actually got a message, I'm not going to say who I got the message from. But I'm, I'll just read an excerpt right now, just from them, just so that you know. So this is some, okay. Unfortunately, at this time, we are not entertaining, entertaining new funds due to the excess liquidity in the banks, the bank has in its government portfolio, portfolios. This is something most banks are currently experiencing due to the American Rescue Plan Act and other stimulus funds flooding the market. And if they are taking in new funds, it will probably be reflected at the current, reflected in the lower rate, excuse me, lower interest rate, currently in the range of .01 to .15. That was just from one financial institution. Both bond council and the financial advisor to the district mentioned a lot of these financial investment institutions are, are, are not strapped, but they're, they exceeded the limits that they're able to invest. So we're, we're looking. I know he also, I spoke to this, this particular person. I know they were talking about the, I think it's, I think it's the T bill. I don't, I don't know. The six-month T bill, this 12-month, six-month bill right now, he said it was. Hmm? No, we can only, we can invest in less than a year, so whatever the, I don't, I'm not, see, this is, this, this goes a little beyond my scope, but. Right, so the, but if, if we put it in a six-month, I think we can earn 1%, he's telling me. He's anticipating the market to take another swing because of how's the rates are going up and there's going to be some kind of turn. But I, I am working with invest, with them. I, I, I am still hesitant about putting that in here. The benefit is if, if we do experience additional revenue, that would then go towards surplus, which we could utilize to help support future capital reserve projects. So I am looking into it. It's, it's difficult getting in touch with people between everything else that I'm doing, so I am playing some phone tag, but we are working on that.
Okay, yeah, I, I, so the, the one piece that you mentioned about certain banks reaching their capacity of what they can invest, that sounds very bizarre to me because there's really no limit to what can be invested. But appreciate your efforts and, and think that we should still continue to, to push that and look into it.
I, I think what they were telling me is because they are so limited in what they can do with government funds that they have an allocation of what they can take in. He told me he has over 5 billion in, in government funds right now. He can't, he, he, it's 5 billion, does that sound right? Maybe it's 5 million. I, I don't, I don't know. But he said he, he just can't, he, there's nothing, he can't take anymore and the bank won't let him take anymore. And they're not making enough on their return, I guess, I don't, I don't know. Out of my, out of my box.
It might be worth getting another opinion from another.
I have, I have three, that was one person that called me back, so I have two more to work on.
Perfect, I appreciate it. And then, so I've saved the best for last. So we've had a lot of discussion around the SLEOs in our budget. And, you know, Dr. Mortimer has expressed that she would like to start with two or three, you know, approach it cautiously, make sure we get the right people in the seats. And I, you know, that resonates with me and I appreciate that. From my perspective, I think that plan does leave a little bit of a gap in our district. You know, with Mr. Miller's recent resignation, we will have no security coverage in our elementary schools, which from my perspective is not okay. You know, after the last board meeting, I think it was Mrs. Peck who had asked for the data regarding school shootings or school violence. And Dr. Mortimer did provide that to us after the, the last meeting. And one thing that stuck out from that is that, you know, the elementary schools actually had a higher risk factor for school shootings and violence than the middle school, which for me is another reason to really make sure that we have appropriate coverage in the elementary schools when it comes to security. And, you know, we said in the past, you can't put a price on safety. And I definitely respect your opinion, Dr. Mortimer. But I think we as a board also have a responsibility to ensure that we are, you know, approaching this really well and really thoughtfully and making sure that we do have all of our students, you know, cared for and, and secure. So I think, you know, we, we need to reconsider that. I think we need to talk through it. So I think, you know, we need to reconsider that, I think we need to talk through it a little bit more, it's not a significant add to the budget, it's 220K. You know, we were just talking about adding another 80K for part of the roof, this is a little more than than twice that. So I just, I would appreciate at least being able to talk through that a little bit more.
Any other discussion? Ms. Colombo?
It's not about that, but I was just going to say thank you to Keith for looking into a suggestion from Ms. Peterson, because I think that was really great, and thank you to you and Barbara for all the hard work that you put into this. That's all, just thank you.
Mrs. Price?
So I just want to echo the the concerns that Ms. Peterson put out as well, because in our discussion at the last meeting, you know, that I understand 100% of making sure we're hiring the right people, the right fit, at the right pace that we need. I just think having the funds available to us as we find those people to make sure that all the schools are covered or covered to at least the best that they can be, and not restricting ourselves to just having budgeted for three officers would be in the best interest of the students and staff as a whole. So the only real concern I have is regards to not making enough money available, that if by some chance we get all of these beautiful resumes and and all of these wonderful people that we can put in properly and thoughtfully, and they're the right fits for each of the individual schools, that we don't leave any of the schools shorthanded for the safety of the students and the staff.
Mrs. Hanlon?
I go back to supporting our superintendent. Our superintendent gave us a budget in which she told us that she feels, she, the chief school administrator herself, wants to start with the middle school and the high school. I understand that some people would like to see it at every school, but at the same time, our roles here, we're not supposed to be governing the schools, you know, that is her job to bring forth that to us, she does not feel comfortable, she told us that, she told us that in committee, and she told us that as well to the full board at our last meeting when we discussed the budget, that she feels more comfortable starting at the middle school and the high school. In all due respect, our other schools that would not start with the police officer, let's not lead the public on to think that they wouldn't be covered. Both the Westwood Police Department, the Washington Township Police Department do a phenomenal job, the response time would be very fast. We also have the county officers, the sheriff's department, I've been to New Jersey school boards at the local level, and they they also patrol the area, could be here to back up our local officers very quickly. I, I am not comfortable moving forward with doing every school when our chief school administrator is telling us she's not. You know, our job here is also to support our administrators, yes, you can sit there and say we have money in capital reserve, you know, but that's not always why you take money out, it's not just because, well, we've got it, let's let's just spend it. You know, it's not that I don't care about the other schools, that is be far from the truth, but you do a program, you do it right. You bring in these two schools, let the superintendent see how it's working or not working, and let her come back to the board, and for next year's budget, if she feels comfortable expanding it to the other schools, great, maybe she's going to come back to you and tell you it didn't work at all. You know, I think that'd be far worse to start a program in every school, and God forbid there's a problem, and don't say there could never be a problem, because that that'd be unrealistic for any of us to say that. I think more than likely, she, you know, she'll take this year developing it and getting it moving and then coming back to you with a recommendation in the second year, but I would not like to force that upon her by by the will of the board telling her that we don't respect your decision and we're telling you that we want the opposite. That's basically how I take it if the board went and just putting money in the budget, I don't like that either, just to sit there and put a bloated budget, you know, you're basically telling, you wouldn't be just putting it there, let's be honest, you'd be telling her you want seven, the money's in there for seven, get seven, and I don't think that's fair to Dr. Mortimer.
Okay, I think that.
Michelle?
Yes?
I'm sorry, I just.
Oh, go ahead.
Can I please just respond? Nowhere did I think, Ms. Peterson, you can correct me if I'm wrong, did either one of us say in our statements that we think the decision she's made is wrong? What we'd said was is that to have it be available, that as she's developing it, to have the flexibility to to expand it within this next school year, there was no intent of saying, no, Dr. Mortimer's wrong and we want it this way. It was giving her the flexibility, because it makes sense that we start here to get the right people in place, and everything Dr. Mortimer said is 100% on point, but to for for you to twist what at least I said, because I don't want to speak for Ms. Peterson, to say that I'm saying that no, she needs to put seven officers in place immediately is absolutely not what I said, and I don't particularly care for the way that you re-explain what other peoples have have said to say that we're trying to manipulate what's happening with Dr. Mortimer's authority. That is how I understood what you said.
That's fine, I didn't use any of those words, didn't say anybody twisted it, like, so you're putting words in my mouth now, and I just want, no, no, it's, it's fine, let's, let's have a good discussion, it's not, I'm, I understand what you're saying. And again, you know, in my perspective, then we would be bloating the budget, and, you know, one of the other reasons Dr. Mortimer brought up about starting only with two and or three was also the fact of the cost of the budget, you know? And while, you know, I respect that you're saying it's only a couple hundred thousand, that's extra money on the taxpayer. So I, I understand what you're saying, I didn't feel that, but to me, by putting in money for seven people, that's what you're saying, you're saying hire seven people, I understand you feel that it's saying, go ahead and hire two to three, whatever, and then, but we're giving you the money for more, but that's not really what the intent of putting money into a budget is for.
But that's exactly what we did last year, where we built extra money into the budget to have potential COVID-related things we needed to have for the fall that we may not have been able to anticipate at that time. So we did exactly the same thing last year, to be able to give the superintendent, who's no longer with us, the ability to have extra funds if there was a necessity to use them. So it's no different than what we have already done in the past, so the precedents have already been set.
So if I can just chime in real quick, Mrs. Peterson? Thank you. Sorry, Mrs. Sumbler. Mrs. Price, thank you for addressing Mrs. Hanlon's comments, I would absolutely agree, I think this is actually the second time, and I've been on this board for two months, that you have thrown grenades across the board table at me, so I don't know if there's something personal going on, but I would ask you to please stop it. So with your comments, I would agree, the Westwood and the Township Police Department do a phenomenal job, and yes, if we needed them, they would be there in a heartbeat. The reality is that they have a lot of other things going on, other than just worrying about our schools, so we can't rely solely on them to cover our elementary schools. I think, you know, if there's an issue or something going on in the schools, the first minute or the first two minutes are the most crucial, and if we're relying on the police department to come, they wouldn't be there for that. You know, we talked extensively about the SLEOs in past meetings, and never did we say or insinuate that if we put the budget in for all seven, that we absolutely expect Dr. Mortimer to fill all seven, it was quite the opposite. What we said is that let's put the budget in there, let's have the placeholder, we know that the economy is opening up, the job market is expanding, unemployment is decreasing, there's people out there looking for jobs, this might be a great opportunity to find all seven. If we don't, that's fine, we have said from the very beginning, we want this done correctly, we want it done thoughtfully, cautiously, there is no pressure, but at least let's have the placeholder, let's cover all the schools, let's do it right.
Okay, Mrs. Peck?
So I have a couple of comments, one, I believe that Dr. Mortimer wasn't just about finding the right person, but it was also about her role in managing seven people. So putting the money there and then saying, well, we put the money there, now let's try our best to find more people and ask her to do something that maybe she wasn't comfortable doing is not, I think, our best decision. But John Miller, sorry, is not being replaced, but who's going to be, or what will be watched, how will our schools be watched before John Miller was watching the schools? He wasn't in all of them, but he had a means to watch the schools, who's taking that part over?
Essentially, the principals at this point. No, as you said, John Miller wasn't in every school, you know, at all, every moment, it would be impossible, obviously, for the six people to be there, so we have our extensive security measures in place, and the principals and the staff members watch.
Okay, I have a couple of comments, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I just want to make sure that we're not leaving the public with the impression that all of a sudden our elementary schools aren't, have no one watching them, it's going to be similar to what was already in place. We have security measures, we we met with the security people, they said we were doing a fabulous job and felt that our children were very safe in the buildings as they were. So it's not that our children are just being left without putting officers in the buildings.
Mrs. Peterson?
Thank you. So just two things, I think, you know, the SLEOs, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Pontillo, you may know this, but I think the SLEOs report into the police department, not Dr. Mortimer, so it wouldn't be headcount that she would need to manage. And then the other thing is, you know, Mr. Miller, he, my daughter's at Brookside, I've seen him there more times than I can count, you know, and that presence won't be there anymore, so, yes, we may have some sort of security coverage, but certainly not to the extent that we did with him, and that position is being eliminated or not backfilled, so I, I think we need to do something there.
Okay, so I have a couple of comments. First, I would like to say that I think we all respect Dr. Mortimer, we just gave her a five-year contract, but, you know, like, in any position, we're not going to agree with every single decision, we're going to have discussion, and that's okay, and that's, that's why we represent different areas, different people in the community. As far as the class, the class three officers and the security position, I think what happened was, the original plan was to fill the security specialist position in a three-fifths position, a part-time position, and then in addition to that, we were going to place a class three officer in every single school building. That was the security plan, that was something that we talked about, that was something that we discussed, it was something that was also recommended from the the security analysis that we had done, however, when the budget was being put together, we realized we're over budget. We're over 2%, some cuts have to be made. The discrepancy is what needs to be cut first, and that's, it's, that's difficult, we all have different opinions on what's the most important thing, what should have precedence, what should and should not be cut. I also have concerns that we're cutting both, so at the meeting, it was presented that we're going to cut the security specialist position completely, no longer full-time, no longer three-fifths to cut costs, and it was going to be rolled over into the new technology position. So I think we all agreed that that was a good idea to do that, because that's how they handle it in a lot of other districts in the area, the security specialists would be dealing with the technology. We also cut the stipend, our security specialist was being paid a stipend for carrying a weapon, so that was a little over 12,000, I think, a year, since we would no longer have somebody visiting the buildings and carrying a weapon. But I do have concerns that we are cutting both the security specialist position and the additional class three officers. No, it's not leaving our elementary schools, in theory, completely uncovered, but it does feel like it is a reduction in security for our elementary schools. So, so I do hear that concern, and I also have the same concern, if there is, you know, my other concern is that with three, with three officers, how do we divide that budget, like, for for the towns, because we would be hiring two through Washington Township and one through Westwood, does that play into, no, doesn't matter, okay. Because I was going to say, even if we had hired one for each of the elementary town, you know, for the, for one for Westwood, for the elementary buildings that could be shared, and one for Township that could be shared, you know, I am hesitant on that as well, I do think that, you know, it is a little bit of a reduction in the security in the buildings, and as we're seeing more so and more so, more violence, and, and, you know, I feel like we need to be increasing the security. So if there is a way, we could, we could reconsider adding those, even if it's not seven, maybe five, allocating the money so that we put this aside for our kids, for the additional security. Those are, and, and I know some may feel like that's administering the district, but this is a board, this is a budget, this is our, the, one of our board goals is security and safety, and it is our responsibility to make sure that those goals are being met. And that's it. Does anyone have any other discussion?
Mrs. Colombo?
Not so much discussion, just I still support Dr. Mortimer's rollout. I think she's the only one here who goes to all the schools, right, every day, she knows, I trust her opinion, I hear the concerns, I worry too. That's why we do the lockdowns and the drills and have the vestibules and the visiting police officers, but I think it's, it's a good start, you know, we had zero last year, and now we're potentially getting three. It's, it's a good, I think it's a good place to start, and I support her opinion.
Mr. Pontillo?
So there's a variety of scenarios that could exist that impact the budget, and we know that, or at least we've been told that we can't change the budget numbers after tonight, and we have to come forward with a comprehensive package. The problem is, is that we don't have all the numbers, we don't know what the impact is, we don't know what we're buying for the money spent, I brought this up at the last meeting. We received a $441,000 increase in state aid, the Chapter 44 appeal, I think the quote is more than likely to go with the schools' counter. I think the quote is more than likely to go with the school's calculation. Well, how does that impact the budget overall? What kind of dollar amount does that equate to? And if we're at a set number, what other things on the menu of that original face sheet could that purchase if we so chose to do that? I agree with the sentiment that there is a lost security component. I think that having Mr. Miller's experience as a retired police officer and a school security professional and him going around to the schools and observing those drills, he brought a different perspective, if you will, to seeing what goes on in the schools when those drills occur. I don't think that the building principal has the training or the capability to stand in the place of that. So I agree that we are kind of stepping back a little bit. Clearly, I'm a proponent of the SLEO threes, I can't vote on it, so I'll just move past that. But the SLEO three component is a big piece of the total aggregate dollar value where it could be changed, right? So seven versus three, or two, or four, or five. And then you could talk about the implementation of how they're used. So just to give you an example, the current proposal would have two at the high school, one at the middle school. The second position at the high school could be used for off-hours. It could be used for different locations if there's already one here. You could do something with the two where you could work a, enhancing the security in the elementary buildings. Having one dedicated to the middle school in Westwood, I don't think you'd have that opportunity. So when I had asked at the last meeting to understand what their specific scenarios are, what the budget impact was, it was to aid in discussions like this. Sadly and unfortunately, that's not here before us tonight. And I think that's a problem. It's one of the reasons why I voted no on the budget last year was because it was rushed. It was just put in front of you and it was, here's this package, you got to vote on it. I don't think that that's a prudent way to spend the taxpayers' money. We need to know what are we getting, what is the value that we're getting for our money spent? And it should be clear, it should not be ambiguous. It shouldn't be, wow, you know, there's three, 400,000 here or there. It shouldn't be like that. And I think the public deserves better from all of us. So I think that to have a fruitful discussion and everyone's opinion on the matter, and certainly the superintendent's needs to be respected. But there's ways of incorporating a better level of safety on the elementary level. It requires thoughtful discussion, but I don't know that it's baked into Component A in Section 20 here tonight. Thank you.
Mrs. Peck?
This may be a random question, but if we hire four, can we have a rotating officer? Or do they have to be assigned to one building?
Let me take that. So scheduling for a SLEO three officer would fall under the chief of police. Obviously, there would be an agreement between the district and the police department of how those people would be utilized. They can go building to building, but they cannot go cross over town to town. So if Township hires two SLEO threes, when they're working and they're dedicated to that community, they're there, right? So the two, let's just, for argument's sake, say they work an eight-hour day and you decide that, you know, we have a sporting event and we're going to work late, so you could stay off in the morning and into the night, and you would probably have them both at the school here. But if you wanted to have them both work, you know, eight to four, 7:30 to 3:30, something like that, the second one could be assigned to make visits to other buildings. You could pre-plan when the drills might happen, that they are at those buildings during the course of those drills. I try to assign my guys currently to be at the drills as a second set of eyes, as a layer to have discussion, to make teachable moments for, you know, the teacher that accidentally leaves the magnet on the doorway and, you know, the door's left open, or something like that. You know, because you want to point out the things, and this is how people train. You know, you train like you fight, you fight like you train, so when something happens. You know, so having an extra set of eyes and having people as a presence during those drills is an important thing. But, you know, the scheduling piece is really open, but I think you limit yourself when you have one body and, you know, dedicated for one building.
I think that's a really good point that you just brought up. If we hire, so, I mean, if feasible to put another $55,000 into this budget, we're talking about a $63 million budget, maybe that's a good compromise. Maybe it's two for Township and two for Westwood. And at least we know all schools are covered and the second one in each town could rotate, you know? We can have a permanent one maybe at the high school and a permanent one at the middle school and then, you know, the other two can rotate the elementary schools. I think that would make us feel a lot better. I think that's a great compromise, going from three to four as opposed to three to seven. And everyone gets coverage. Can we make that a motion? Can we, I'm sorry, Mr. Pontillo?
If I may, we had talked about a proper rollout. We had talked about hiring the right people. We had talked about companionship with the district and the department during the course of the interviews for the people. To Mrs. Price's point about, you know, having available funds in the event you find the right people, I think that's really the way this rolls out. I don't think this is a, hey, X number of dollars, this is the date we're going to have somebody by and the seat will be filled. You know, there's a lot of police departments that have, I guess what you call an open enrolling application process until the position is filled because you're looking for the right person. I believe I brought that up at the last meeting and it's certainly something. Because I'm conflicted on the vote, obviously, here as a board member, so I'm going to abstain from that, but I could certainly support that as a police chief, you know, to do something to that effect. And I'll stop before I go over a line that I shouldn't. Thank you.
Just going to say that, you've got to be careful. You know, we can't rely on, in this conversation, we should not be turning it, in all due respect to the police chief, because he is a board member, he is conflicted. He's got to, he's got to be careful about what he says. That really should be, it's really tough, it's really tough and I'm not, you know, I'm not dis-
Listen, I'm just trying to be helpful, answer the questions because I have the knowledge, that's all. That's all.
I totally understand that, Michael, that's what I said. Don't want to put you in that position where it could turn on you. Not, I'm not, you know that.
Thank you, I got it, yeah, absolutely.
Mrs. Peck?
Dr. Mortimer, is that something you would be comfortable with if we did four instead of three?
I think we'd have to have a discussion about the additional funding and the impact. You know, would that, would that call for a reduction or is that increasing the tax levy?
Okay, so, so I, I know Mr. Pontillo made mention about the numbers with Chapter 44. I'm going, I hate to go back, but I just want to say the tax levy, it's either, it's not going to change if they reduce our number. I just wanted to make, yeah, so that won't impact and the decision, the decision kind of won't impact. But to increase 55, you would have to increase the budget 55,000, which would impact the tax levy and would increase it. So I think 220 is point five, so 110, I think 110 K is roughly about 0.25% increase up. So it'd be half of that, so it'd be 13. So the tax levy would go from 2.56. And again, don't hold me exactly to this number, but it's a rough estimate. 2.69% increase. Tax levy increase from prior, from current year tax levy. 1.3, yeah.
So, Mr. Rosato, what does that come out to roughly per household? Is that like a quarter, 30 cents?
I feel like you're going to ask for a calculator like last meeting.
I am, I'm going to use a calculator, but I got to get my number first.
Okay, while he's looking, does anyone have any other discussion or any other points that they wanted to bring up in regards to this? Mrs. Columbo?
I like, appreciate Ms. Peck, she's trying to think and find a solution, so I appreciate that. All I was going to say was that, you know, we were losing John Miller and that we're trying this new direction, you know? So this is all like new territory for everybody. And it's one year, like it's just one year. So like that's, in my mind, that's what I was thinking, like that's why I was comfortable or am comfortable with the rollout because it's, we're trying this out for one year, changing something to something new. You know, to go from this to, whoa, all the way over to seven. So like that's why I like, I think it's a natural process to ease into it. I guess I like to go slowly into the pool instead of jumping straight in, even though I'm a swimmer. So that's why I'm more so, we're only making a one-year commitment and then we can change our, change our, or whatever, we decision for the following year. So it's one year, it's not like we're, at least for me, the rollout is a one-year. It's not ruling it out forever to seven, it's just, this is our decision for this year.
I think, I think for me, I can't see any, any negative to placing these officers in the building, other than the cost. So for me, I just feel like with safety and security and our kids and everything that's been going on and we're seeing it more and more and we're, you know, we're getting more emails and alerts of just some like alarming things happening. It just didn't feel right to me for that to be the first thing cut out of the budget. Like I would be more comfortable cutting, you know, some of the other upgrades or repairs as opposed to personnel. I also think having another, an additional personnel in any building, I think, is helpful. Another set of eyes, another set of ears. These officers are also going to build relationships with students, they're going to build trust so that students, you know, it's more community awareness. There's other things that they can be doing in the buildings to help our administrators, to help the principals. I think, you know, it would be helpful for them to have one less thing on their plate, to help with the lockdown drills. I just can't think of any, you know, other than the cost, right? If we can make the cost work, I don't see why we wouldn't do it, you know?
Dr. Mortimer, are they allowed to do other things in the building? Because I was always under the impression that the class three, other than just, like, just security. I'm just, just curious, just for the audience.
The class three officers are not administrators, so they would, they do police work only.
And class three are only allowed to be assigned to the schools? To, no, to the schools in general. They can't do any other police work. They, they're strictly, they're strictly for schools only.
Mrs. Price?
So, okay. So I want to just tell, but I want to ask if, if we did come up with what the household income impact would be, or, income, what the impact would be per household.
To increase 55,000? I took it as a whole, again, I'm not breaking it down by town because the numbers are different. So take it by a whole, would essentially have an impact of .000145 per hundred-dollar assessed home.
Hundred thousand?
Hundred, per hundred, so times... Times, that's per hundred, so for every hundred dollars your home is assessed, so times 100. So it is, per hundred thousand assessed, it's one cent.
Okay.
So the average home is about 400,000, you're talking four cents.
So my taxes aren't going up next year any more than, right, okay. So the motion on the table, if I understand it, is to move...
Motion A.
Motion A, right? The, and part of this discussion is trying to come up with how we can best cover everything. And I know that I can't make another motion because we already have a motion on the table, but if we're not looking at a, at...
I think you need to amend the motion.
Can we, yeah, can we make a motion to amend A to go from three class three officers to four? And now procedurally, I don't know how to do that. I'm going to play my, I haven't been here two years card.
Can we just, can they just vote on the original motion that's on the agenda? And then see if it passes or not? And then vote to amend it if it doesn't pass?
Well, I, yeah, we can do, you can do either way, I mean, yeah.
My recommendation would be to vote on my original recommendation on the agenda.
Roberta, Mrs. Hanlon?
It's okay, either name works. I just wanted to ask one clarifying question of Dr. Mortimer. Would you be comfortable with the board changing it to four?
I certainly don't object to that, but I, my preference would be, like I said, for the board to vote on the original motion first. And then if it doesn't pass, we can have a discussion about that.
Mrs. Peck?
If it does pass, then that's just the way it stays. And there's no changing it.
Can I further complicate things for a second? Just a clarifying question, right? So it's a financing facilities issue that is tethered to the SLEOs. So do I just abstain from the SLEO component? Can I vote yes, can I vote no, do I have to abstain? Clarifying.
I think you can vote on the budget as is the total budget under financing facilities.
Anybody object to that? Okay, just asking, clarifying, that's all. Thank you.
I'm sorry, just another question again, the, so if we did four, one would be in the high school, one would be in the middle school, and those two would be floating around in the elementary. Is that the will or?
That would be the will, that would be the hope.
The idea, okay.
Idea, I think.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's a good compromise. I mean, I think that Dr. Mortimer said she wouldn't object to it. I think it would make a lot of people, in light of recent events as well, you know, feel a little more comfortable.
Any other discussion on financing facilities, Item A, the budget, before we close discussion? Okay. I'd like to close discussion and move to roll call.
Can I just get a clarifier on what exactly is, are we doing it as written or we, as, as written, okay?
As written.
Thank you.
Mrs. Columbo?
No.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
No.
Mrs. Peterson?
No.
Mr. Pontillo?
No.
Mrs. Price?
No.
Mrs. Semler?
No.
Okay, motion not carried? If someone wants to make a motion, I guess those that... Who can make the motion now?
Mrs. Price?
So, so I'd like to make a motion to amend Number 20A under financing facilities to change from Fund III SLEO. change from Fund Three, slio, class three officers to four. Did I say that right? To increase the budget to 55,000 for this salary.
Fifty-five thousand, so, I mean, if you want to wait, I'll calculate the numbers, or we could just say increase 55, and I can calculate, do the calculations later.
I think, I think we're okay to say, just increase the 55,000, and you can-
To four. So, oh, and to, as I'm, just came to, so to Mr. Pontillo's question earlier about the county exact, one other thing, I want to point out, the only thing that will change on this resolution would be the amount of the withdrawal from the capital reserve. Right. But that's where the Chapter 44 stuff, but it's also going to change here. So we're going to increase that 602 by 55,000, and the, in the resolution, the budget, general fund budget total, the $65,831 will be increased 55,000, the total, and that same column, the total base budget, $70,439 will be increased by 55,000. Under the local tax levy, the fix, the general fund, $56,86314 would increase 55,000, and under the total base budget, the $58,159,361 will increase by 51, 55,000. Yes. So that was Mrs. Price's motion, did we get a second?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Peterson, discussion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Columbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Semler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, curriculum and programs. Mrs. Price, can you please move Agenda Item A, and then I think, oh.
Yes, just A.
Just A.
I'd like to move Motion A under curriculum and programs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Pontillo, discussion.
I just want to point out that this is for, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, for field trips that are more than 25 miles from the district, because I just love seeing that all of these things are coming, coming back. There was two additional field trips that were added that I think is not on the public agenda, one was for the high school, is it on? Oh, they have it, okay. So the high school French class trip, and Brookside's first grade trip to the museum in Monroe, New York, our eighth graders are going to Great Adventure for a trip, the Safe Driving Club, grades nine through 12 are going to go to Great Adventure, we have Turtleback Zoo for first grade in Washington School, and the Bronx Zoo for chemistry in grades 10 and 12, so this is like, what? And bio, and biology. So they're all going on these, these will be happening in April and May, so I just, it makes me really happy to see all these things, you know, coming back and the kids getting to experience that. So I just wanted to point that out. Any other discussion? Curriculum and programs? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Columbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Only if I can go with Ms. Farolick and Ms. Casimir to Great Adventure. If I can go, it's yes. Yeah, yeah, yes.
Mrs. Semler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, old business. Does anybody have any old business that they would like to discuss? No? Mrs. Columbo?
I know, I know it was tabled, but just if we could try to hurry that roof thing along, because that's just weighing on me.
Yeah.
So if we can make it so that we still make it in time for the bid and make it for the summer, that's all.
Yeah, we have 60 days, so I think if, if we can get, they absolutely, if this is important to financing facilities, I would absolutely expect that they're going to have a meeting ASAP to hash it out, work it out, and discuss, and get it back on the agenda for April 21st, whether it's the additional part of the roof or, or the original.
I will send an email in the morning, so we get a date on the calendar.
Okay, thank you. Any other old business? Do we have any new business? Mrs. Peck?
Keith, the, the roof would fall under new business? If we brought it-
Yeah, the roof, the roof and the Berkeley School project, but if you want to discuss, it could fall under-
It falls under new business.
Yeah.
So can we vote to approve the original part, and then finance the facilities, can, no?
No, because, because you're going to be entering into contract, contract's going to draw, you can't make a change amendment after the fact, you would have to move, approve now, the, all, the intention, all the intentions of the project. You can't split it, sorry.
Any other new business? I have one new business item I just wanted to bring up, that I think I wanted to bring to policy, just concerns with, I think something that needs to be looked at is the, the dress code policy that we have for the, that the board has written, I think it's something that we need to go back and look at. There is a dress code policy for students, and there's also a dress code policy for staff. There is a resolution for the dress code for staff, but there is not a resolution for the dress code for students. So I'm just wondering, I'm just thinking it's-
Regulation?
Regulation, you're, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes. Oh, there's not a regulation, thank you. There's a regulation for the policy for staff dress code, but there is not currently a regulation for the students' dress code policy, and I'm just wondering, it's, you know, I think it's worth a discussion, it's worth looking at, I think there's discrepancies among schools regarding the dress code, and that's it. I just, I just hope that you guys can look at that and have a discussion, and I'll send you some more details via email regarding some of my concerns. Mrs. Hanlon?
I think it's a great idea to always to look at the dress code policy, I think that's a great idea to have them look at it and see whether or not it needs updating, sure.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Kaylee.
I guess this is just for the folks sitting at home, could you perhaps define what the difference between a policy and a regulation is? Because I didn't know, like, something needed to have both of them, or that there was a difference.
Who wants to take that? You want me to take it?
The policy is approved by the board, the regulation is more the administration piece. Not every policy has a regulation.
The policy, yeah, is the policy, and then the regulation would go into more detail about how that policy would, yes, it would regulate the policy, it would break it down and put it into more detail on to how that policy would be implemented into the district. But the regulations also are approved by the board, so the policies are approved, but not every policy necessarily needs a regulation or warrants a regulation, but sometimes, sometimes they do. So there's a very detailed regulation on the staff dress code, which is uniform throughout the district, but there is no regulation on the student dress code, so somewhat differs in the buildings, so I'm just wondering if it's worth, you know, let's look at it, let's talk about it, it's come up, so I think it's worth a discussion. That's all.
So there's a policy meeting Tuesday night, we'll add it to the agenda.
Perfect, thank you. Mrs. Columbo?
Last thing, I want to thank the Jesse George principal, Ms. Caduto, and the Jesse George staff for coming here tonight and presenting. I would love for you guys to come every meeting, because I think it added a little extra, you know, movement to our meeting, and I think we should enlist you guys to help us with the budget and raising money, because you're really good at it. The whole time I was thinking that, when we were talking about the 80,000, I'm like, why don't we just have the Jesse George dancers make, you know, earn that money for us? So we might be calling upon you, but thank you so much, it was really a nice presentation.
Thank you, yeah, to piggyback off that, thank you, it's always a pleasure, you are, you know, a shining light in this district, and we love, I love having you and seeing you and presenting, and it, it shows in everything that you do, so we really value you and appreciate you, so, and thank you for, you know, sitting through this wonderful budget discussion. Anything else for new business?
Make a motion that we close the meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.